I'd like to call this meeting to order. Today is Tuesday, September 25th, 2018, and this is a Prescott City Council Study Session. Let's call roll, please.
Mayor Mangarelli.
Present.
Mayor Protem Orr.
Here.
Councilman Blair.
Yes.
Councilman Good.
Here.
Councilman Lamerson.
Here.
Councilwoman Schol.
Yeah.
Councilman Shiska is excused.
All right, thank you. Looks like we have a couple of guests. Supervisor Brown, good to see you today. And from over the hill, Charlie German, Mayor Camp Verde, good to see you.
We have Cecilia.
Oh, there's Cecilia. Hi, Cecilia. Missed you over there. City Manager, Chino Valley, good to have you. We're going to do a presentation with the Big Chino Valley Pump Storage by ITC. And then the council will have an opportunity to ask some questions after we're done. There will be no public comment today, so go ahead.
Thank you very much for the invitation to come and speak and present the product as a Big Chino Valley Pump Storage Project. Let me know if I'm not getting close enough to the mic. It's a common thing, I've got to keep heading over. So I'll try to keep this to 20 or 30 minutes, as far as the presentation, and allow time for questions. Like you said, get over in about an hour. So feel free to move me along, poke me, prod me if I'm lagging. So to start off, I'll tell you kind of real briefly who ITC is. ITC is an electrical transmission company. So we spun off from a traditionally structured IOU, investor-owned utility in the state of Michigan, DTE. So most typical IOU utilities own distribution, they own generation, and they own transmission. They kind of do all three of the main, how you get electricity from generation to somebody's doorstep in their house. We just focus on the electrical transmission portion of that delivery system. We spun off in 2003 primarily because our transmission system in the United States was not getting the investment that the other two pieces of that puzzle were, the generation or the distribution. And we've had, we've grown quite a bit over the 15 years since then, investing in transmission in our home state of Michigan, where ITC was founded, as well as where we've grown through the Midwest and into the Great Plains states. So in Iowa, Minnesota, Missouri, a little bit in Illinois, and then we also have assets that we built in Kansas and Oklahoma. In 2016, we were purchased by a company called Fortis. That's a Canadian utility holding company. They own utilities throughout the United States, Canada, and Central America, the Caribbean. Why we're basically here in Arizona is we're sister companies with Tucson Electric, who's also owned by Fortis. And they were acting kind of as their development arm for Fortis, looking at projects to invest in the grid outside of our traditional operating areas. So we've talked to Tucson Electric about storage and where they see the state of Arizona and the general region of the desert southwest of the US going, in terms of the generation mix, in terms of how we operate that grid in the most efficient manner. And that's what's driving our presence here in this project, at the end of the day. I always kind of do this, I jumped ahead a little bit. So I just kind of spoke to our timeline and kind of how we came as a company. And that's what that is. From '03, we were privately spun off, we went public in '05, purchased in '16, and now are part of that Fortis family of companies there. And if you want me to come back, if I'm moving too fast on slides, please just let me know and I'll move backwards. Things that we pride ourselves on as a company, operational excellence. We operate, own, maintain transmission assets. We're not acting as a development company that goes and builds a project and then sells it, and then gets out, and we move on. That's not what we do. We build, we operate, we partner with utilities in the area, we partner with local companies in the area, and we operate and we maintain those assets long-term. And that's our intent here with this project as well. We're talking with multiple utilities in the state of Arizona, as well as the region in general, about how this can bring the best value to them, in terms of maximizing their investment in the renewable generation and their asset class, and just operating the grid in the most efficient manner. Our reputation and track record, to us, it speaks, we're very proud of that. Transmission is an infrastructure. It is not always something that folks like to see in their backyards or anywhere that they're a part of, but the reality is electricity drives our economy, it drives what we, you know, what we as a society can do. So it's one of those things that's a part of life. And we try to build this in the most responsible manner that we can. We look for investments that make sense. We're not just out building investments just to make money. You build investments that there's a need for it, through the planning process, in the regional transmission organizations, throughout the country. So that's kind of how we go about this. And we don't just haphazardly build it. Sometimes the best answer to a situation may not be to build more transmission, it may be storage in this case, or it may be another generator, maybe just kind of focused on one particular issue. So, and then our grid development group, that's the group that I'm part of, again, we look at opportunities and investments outside of our traditional operating companies. And that's why we're here in Arizona, outside of Tucson's base area, outside of ITC's, although even Tucson Electric has their gas side unisource, who does have service in this area. So some of the energy challenges in the southwest region of the United States that kind of are jumping out to us. The changing generation mix, just the change from predominantly fossil fuel generation profile, switching over the next 10, 20, 30, 40 years to more of a renewable mix, much more percentage of, whether it's solar, whether it's wind, geothermal, anything else, other technology that comes to present itself, that is dependent on the environments, depending on wind speed, is depending on cloud cover. As opposed to fossil generation, which, if it's a coal plant, you have a conveyor and you have coal, and you can determine how fast that's going, and when it's going, and when you're producing, and how much electricity. So the higher the renewable generation part of your generation profile, the harder it is to anticipate, to match that demand curve with your generation curve. And that's where a project like this comes into play. And that gets into the second one, supply forecasting issues. You can forecast what the demand is based on history, but it's very hard to forecast that, the generation part of it, and try to match that up, just looking at the weather. And that's where, the more renewable component, the more error you're going to have, and the bigger mismatch you're going to have on a daily basis. And a project like this can act as that shock absorber for the system. So if you're over forecasting or under forecasting, it doesn't matter which one, this can even that out and provide that kind of reliable electricity for the region. Some of the last things here, sufficient flexible responsive capacity ramping resources. So this is a project that is also looking at just the ramp, and when I say ramp, I mean the electrical demand that goes from, say, 3:00 in the afternoon to 9:00 at night. Those may be four to six hours, where folks are maybe primarily at work during the day, and then they come home in the evenings, they turn on air conditioners, they turn on their dishwashers, they turn on a lot of appliances that take electricity. And at the same time, your generation on the renewable side is going down, whether you don't have as much sun, the wind's not blowing, whatever the case may be. So your demand may be going really up, about 15 gigawatts over about four hours, and your generation on the renewable side is going down, and you have to mismatch. That's not a very good combination. So a project like this is perfect for responding to that, because during the day, when the demand's not there, you can use this facility to store that electricity, and then in the evenings, you can turn those pumps around, it acts as a hydropower facility, and it puts that electricity back on the grid when it's primarily needed in the evening. And it does so in a completely green manner, it's a hydro facility, there's no emissions from burning any fossil fuels at all. Again, just a little more on energy challenges. As you all know, there's at least one ballot initiative in the state of Arizona that you all will be voting on here this fall. Regardless of how that ballot initiative ends up, we still see the generation profile changing over the next 20 to 30 years, from less fossil to more renewable. And this is just, to us, this project stands on its own merit regardless of those ballot initiatives. We think the future of the generation mix and operating the transmission grid needs a project like this. High grid, large grid scale storage. I think the second bullet there, we're already seeing, you know, just the population growth in the area, increasing energy demands. So I think I've spoken all this, I don't think I need to linger on this any further. If you have any questions, please let me know. Sustaining upward or downward ramping, again, that ramp goes up in the evening, but then it also goes down after that, it goes down in the morning. We're kind of starting to see a little bit of a peak of a ramp in the morning as well, and we'll see how that develops over time. But again, this is, responds to whether it's a morning or an evening ramp, same way. 2,000 megawatts is roughly half the size of Palo Verde, just to give you a sense of the scale. It's a large, at the time, if it's fully working towards putting electricity back on the system, it's putting out 2,000 megawatts, and it can do that for over 10 hours. So we're talking 20,000 megawatts of energy storage on a daily basis. And again, a defined period of time. Pump storage itself is not a new technology, this has been around as long as, as long as electricity's been here, probably a good 100 years. But what's really changed in the technology is the pump turbines themselves, to allow them to respond much more quickly to be variable speed, which allows you to ramp up with that demand, rather than going in chunks of power. Fixed-speed units, I don't want to get too technical, but fixed-speed units will just go in blocks, so 200 megawatts at a time, and it's much harder to manage that and match it to the demand curve. Variable speed units, which is what we're proposing here, can match that design curve about 98% of the operating profile that we'll see with what we're proposing. So I think that's very positive, and the operators of the grid will actually absolutely love that. And again, quick response, this facility can go from 2,000 megawatts of storing electricity, and switch those around, and have the water come back downhill, and generate 2,000 megawatts, all within about three minutes. So very quick response time, very, very great tool for operating the grid. And it's also a great black start facility, which just means, if we had a regional blackout, whatever waters in the upper pond, the other upper reservoir, can be released to put power onto the grid, start that black start, rebuild, power up additional generating facilities, and go from there. It's a great black start facility. And again, we can do this multiple times a day. We're proposing to have eight units here, two power blocks of four units each, so we can be very flexible in terms of whether we're producing power or we're storing power, depending on what's the demands are on the grid and who our partners are. This is, slide's kind of out of place, and I apologize for that, but that just gets back to the Fortis entities, where they're located. Our footprint is, in terms of ITC, is the blue and the dark green and the light green, and the other entities that Fortis owns, you can see here, spread around North America there, just to give you a sense of, I guess, the reach of the company, so to speak. So as I mentioned earlier, there's possible approaches to meet many of these challenges, so we can create more transmission. So to get more transmission from the generating sources to the demand centers, that's one thing we could do. Another thing, add more generation sources, so if you don't want the transmission part of it, you can put those generation sources close to that demand center. Or the other third option is what we're proposing here, is a large-scale energy storage facility that kind of does a little bit of both. There is transmission that's involved with this, because you do need to connect it to the grid, but at least it's a smaller component of transmission, less linear infrastructure than if you're running a line, say, 200 or 300 miles to a major population center. So what we're proposing here, you all know it's a pump storage facility, but it's a large-scale energy storage, 2,000 megawatts. We're proposing interconnections to Arizona, Nevada, Southern California would potentially be someone who could benefit from this, but they could also be someone who could partner and help pay for it. Pump storage is like a large and flexible electric battery, and that's really kind of, try to visualize what that is. You can continue to feed that battery and load it up and store energy there, and then when you need it, when the demands on the grid need it, you can release that energy back onto the grid. And there is about a 20% loss of efficiency here, no, kind of loop system like this is perfectly efficient. So for every electron that comes into the facility, .8 electrons go back out onto the grid. So the challenge, or I guess, I don't know if it's a challenge, but when we're talking about partnering, and whether this is a benefit or not, the utilities that we're partnering with in this region, as they make investments in renewable energy and other resources on the generating side, they have to look at whether that 20% loss that they're going to gain, they're going to see when they use the storage facility, compensates for their potentially 40, 50, or 60% loss, as their renewable generation assets are not used at 100%. Because a lot of times, our renewables, the way this sort of works, in order to meet mandates, you have to overbuild those renewables, so that they're all available at the right time. So if you have, you build a, say, a solar farm, and it's maybe only working at 50% or 60% of the time, your investment of that, you're only getting half as much out of that as what you want. So by participating and using an energy storage facility, you can have that asset be working 100% of the time, putting your power into the storage facility when you are not needing it, and then releasing that back onto the grid when it's needed. And that's the evaluation that our potential partners are going to be looking at. Does paying for an energy storage service, basically was what this is, does that help? And is it financially feasible, and does it make sense to counteract their investments they're going to make over the next 20 and 30 years in renewable energy? Decades of useful life. If we get to a point where we get a license and actually put this into service, it would be a 50-year license. This is not a short-term life of an asset. 50-year asset, and then you can apply for an additional extension, I guess, of your license, which could be another 50 years. So this is very easily a 50-year asset, and most likely 100-year asset. So this is a large capital project, it's a lot of dollars, but it's spread over upwards of 100 years, and it's something that can provide value over time and time, as compared to some of the other energy storage technologies, such as chemical batteries. Chemical batteries, we do feel have a place in a certain situation where they're useful, and it's usually smaller scale, very specific issues on the grid, where you might have congestion or something. But a chemical battery is usually about 10- to 15-year lifespan. Still very early in that, you know, kind of figuring out how those are actually used, and how much they will, how long they will last, especially in a very hot environment like we have in Arizona. So that's something where you think about investing in something that's 100-year asset versus something that maybe is a 10- to 15-year asset that you have to reinvest in maybe seven or eight times, and then you're disposing of, you know, lithium, myon, lithium, other types of heavy metals, seven or eight times during that process. So that's why we're, we really do feel that pump storage is the right choice for this technology, and that's why we're moving ahead with this. So what is pump storage? Here's a kind of a quick look from a side view. You're basically using two reservoirs to store electricity, and you're storing that electricity in the form of water at a higher elevation. So at times during, say, the middle of the day, where I mentioned earlier, where you take that renewable energy, or any type of energy for that matter, it can be a coal plant, a fossil plant, it could be nuclear at Palo Verde. But if they're producing electricity that's not being needed by the grid, you can use that electricity to power the pumps, that will pump water from the lower reservoir on the right, up to the upper reservoir on the left. And that's how you're storing that electricity. And then later in the day, when that demand curve switches, and that ramp happens in the evenings, at that point, you turn all those off, and you switch it, and now you just let the water come back down via gravity, goes through those same pump turbines, and it converts it back into electricity, and goes back onto the grid to be redistributed to those partners, and eventually down to folks who are using in their homes and their businesses.
What's the height differential between the two reservoirs?
About 1,200 to 1,300 feet.
And your pumps are all electric?
Correct. So our environmental stewardship, this plays a big part into a project like this. Transmission in general is, has, it's a linear infrastructure, so we're very used to working with communities and figuring out the best way to build transmission that meets the needs of the area, but also in an environmentally responsible manner, working with companies and organizations and folks in that area to figure out how to do that in the best way. So that's a big deal in this project, because, obviously, as everybody knows, we're proposing to use water from the Big Chino operate to fill these reservoirs. So our, we've stated on many occasions here publicly, and we'll continue to do it, and I'll do it here, that we're committed to mitigating the impact that we would have. We realize that the impact of withdrawing a good chunk of water to fill these reservoirs has an impact to the area. So if we were just to build this and pump it and not do anything else, it would not be a good thing for the area and for the aquifer. But we're proposing to do many different projects, to do a suite of mitigation projects, to either work with municipalities in the area, work with NGOs in the area, kind of, we're looking at a suite of options to see how we can do those products that will counteract the effect that we're going to have. Because we're looking at withdrawing water maybe 20 to 25 miles from, say, Route 89, up to Big Chino Aquifer, and if we can do a bunch of mitigation projects that are right along 89, right in kind of where the population center is along 89, where the Verde River headwaters are, has a much bigger impact than us withdrawing 25 miles away. So those are the things we're looking at. And I'll get into that a little bit more in a few more slides. So why are we here in Arizona?
Councilman Lamerson has a question for you.
Thank you. You used an interesting word to me.
Yeah.
It has to do with mitigation.
Yes, sir.
And within our contract with Prescott Valley, when we chose to go get some water up in the Big Chino, mitigation was an issue that we discussed. And mitigation means different things. And, you know, I'd like you to explain a little farther, exactly how far you prepared to address mitigation when it comes to impact on the Verde River.
Sure, sure.
If you could, please.
Yes, yes. So the primary way we're looking at that, this is through our water stakeholder group. So our water group is led by a gentleman named Don Poole. Don Poole retired from the United States Geological Service about two years ago. Don worked for them for about 30 years, and was integral to a lot of groundwater modeling efforts that the USGS did over that time. And he modeled the, I think he was, I guess we'd say the author of the Northern Arizona Groundwater Flow Model. So that is the model that we're using to help us determine what would be the impact of our project. And that model is probably about 10 years old, since it's been updated. So the efforts that Don is leading right now, is leading a group of stakeholders, various municipalities in the area, various NGOs in the area. We've invited folks like ADWR, who's actually not participating in an active role, they just, they were overstaffed, they couldn't do that, but they're going, more of a review role. But we want that group to come and participate with Don, and look at the inputs to that model, and bring that up to speed, and make sure that it's something that's reflective of the changes over the last 10 years, and then it can accurately say, you know, as best we can, because I don't think at this point anybody knows exactly what's going on underground there. But that's what this model does, in terms of, it does kind of the best scientific look at what impacts and how the groundwater flow is, depending on what happens to it. So our approach there is to get a flow model that has a general consensus of support from that group, and that says, okay, this is what the model's telling us, is the impact to our project, or that our project has. And then, once you do that, then you can start putting in your mitigation projects, and see what projects you can do that will offset the withdrawal that we are proposing. So we can look at various things, such as, we already know that if we purchase this property, we will retire the ag on this property. It's currently using about 1,500 acre feet a year of water for irrigation pumping. So that's kind of like a no-brainer for us to stop that. You have any question?
Well, if I'm hearing you correctly, here in the hollow vaults of freedom, you know, on the public floor of a debate, what you're saying is you guys are committed to addressing the mitigation that may be necessary if your project impacts the Verde River negatively.
That's correct. We want to get to the point where it does not impact it negatively. We know, we are making the acknowledgement that this project, if there's no mitigation, it would impact the Verde negatively. Our commitment is to do projects on a mitigation, our suite of projects, whatever they may be, to offset that, and make the end result of our efforts a positive for the Verde.
Well, thank you very much for making that a public statement. As we well know, that, you know, back a number of years ago, when we chose to seek out the Big Chino as a water, potential water resource for the city of Prescott, we're also committed to addressing mitigation. So I'm just sharing it with you, that, you know, there's nothing better than being a partner with somebody that understands that we're in this together. The Verde River needs to be, you know, it's the only river we got here.
Mm-hmm.
It needs to be protected.
Yes, sir.
Right? And the flow of the Verde River needs to be protected. And we understand that. So I'm just bringing that out. I want to hear from you publicly, exactly what we're talking about.
Yes, sir.
And we put our money right up front. You know, we committed, whether it's mitigation or safe yield, we put X amount of dollars by contract, right up front. Here's what we're prepared to do.
Right. And we will, we will, probably first quarter next year is kind of when we anticipate being able to kind of have some public meetings, and have some meetings in front of various groups, that says, you know, these are what, from our modeling efforts, are what we see as the suite of projects that will make this project a positive. So that's, and so we'd be open to partnering with any of the municipalities in this general region, as well as any of the NGOs in this area as well. And we know the answer is here is not going to be just one project, and that's it. It's going to be multiple. There's going to be, we will potentially talk to some landowners in that, in the valley, who are in, doing some ag resources, doing some agricultural, and to see if there's any interest from them, either in suspending pumping for a period of time, that kind of matches when we do our withdrawals, or whether they're interested in selling property that we could retire permanently. So we're not forcing anybody to do anything with that, but it's conversations we'd like to have, that's one thing we could do. We could partner with any of those organizations I mentioned earlier, to do recharge facilities, and start recharging some Class A and fluid in that area, that would be a very positive benefit. So if we can do some of those things much closer to the headwaters of the Verde, that has an incremental effect, as opposed to where we're pumping maybe 20 to 25 miles away. So that's kind of our general approach.
Thank you for your comments.
Sure.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, so, am I hearing you that you're saying that you could buy property and put it in conservation? Is that what you're talking about doing?
Yes.
Is that one of the mitigation?
One of them, correct, yeah. So the ranch that we're looking at purchasing, we don't know yet exactly how much of that ranch we will have ultimately control over at the end of the day, because we likely anticipate some land swaps with a few landowners to get the final property we need. But we do anticipate at least 20,000 to 30,000, 20,000 to 25,000 acres that we would put under conservation easement, that we feel is a great step towards kind of preventing future withdrawals, and that, you know, whether it's a subdivision, whether it's industrial farming, whatever the case may be, but just setting that aside, and having it continue to be used for livestock ranching, which is its current purpose, and retiring the ag that's on there.
Good, thank you.
Sure.
Councilman Blair?
A couple of things, I appreciate what Jim's talking about with the Verde, but also I'm concerned about the mitigation of the pumping when it comes to being close to our well field, number one, and what, and how it'll affect Chino Valley, and Paulding, and all the unincorporated wells in Yapai County. And that's a tough question, and a tough one to, you know, handle. I appreciate mitigation, and the thought that you will work with different people, and I'd suggest, and I've been suggesting it forever, that maybe your company, if it goes forward, mitigate with the Sullivan Lake area, and desiltify that facility, and put recharge there, which is the headwater of the Verde.
Right.
For recreational purposes, and a trade-off to your company. There's always a trade-off in everything you do.
Sure.
And I think the bottom line is, I'd like to know what your company intends to have the well depth. Are you going to be in the middle of the bathtub, are you going to be on the outskirts? Have you had all your GIS and all your...
Yeah, so we're still in the process, not, sorry to interrupt you, but we're still in the process of kind of trying to more quantify that northern end of the aquifer, especially, upright towards where the reservoirs are. That area has been under, it's been under private control for 100, 150 years, so there's really very little knowledge about how far the aquifer actually extends, and how depth it is, what the depths are. So we're still evaluating that, and we do hope to have that, enough information from that work to feed into this model before the end of the year, so we have that much more information.
I think all those elements are important, because, again, you know, the well depths, and based upon how that valley operated for years as ag, and having pumps that pumped thousands of gallons literally a minute for agricultural, I understand there's a lot of water there, and those have been retired, and the city of Prescott uses it, but we brought on a concrete plant, we brought on a lot of people in Paulding. And growing up here, out in Paulding, there was one outfit in Paulding when I was in high school, that was a sand and gravel pit. And now if you go out to Paulding, you have all kinds of things, from mini farms to everything, you know, pumping water that's uncontrolled, based upon individual pumps. And so the question becomes, is if you go out there as a major water producer, how much of those well fields that are out there are you going to affect? And I think that question has to be answered.
Sure. And that's what, that's one of the main goals of this modeling effort, to understand what the effect is, both from that kind of that immediate cone of depression, moving forward to how it affects groundwater flows over the many years going forward. I think the last thing I saw from Don was that it's looking out 200 years. So it's not only looking at the immediate impact, but long-term as well. And we do feel, long-term, this project is very much a positive. When you look at what's being used right now on the property for agriculture, at 1,500 acre feet a year, if you do that for 100 years, that's 150,000 acre feet. We're looking at doing a significant withdrawal within the first 10 years to fill the reservoirs, but then after that, our usage on an annual basis, right now, we're anticipating about 925 acre feet, and that's for evaporative loss, but we're working hard to get that down as low as possible. So if we can get that down to, say, even half of that number, we're talking numbers in the areas of, say, 50,000 to 80,000 acre feet over 100 years, which is almost cutting into water usage in half over that long period of time. So from us, if we can do that successfully, and do it in a financial, that's, you know, financially reasonable manner, because it is expensive, then it really comes down to kind of really addressing that immediate withdrawal that we're talking about to fill the reservoirs. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Sure. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you. Here again, by happenstance, feeding off of what Blair was talking about, fact of the matter is the city of Prescott has an assured water right out in the Big Chino. My job as a city councilman for the city of Prescott is to defend our opportunity to go get that water. City of Prescott's future depends on the water that not only did we sell off Hacienda Lake for, we bought a couple of reservoirs to ensure we had assured water rights, et cetera. The Big Chino is part of our portfolio that we need to ensure that whatever, I don't want to call you Johnny Come Lately, but the guy coming back behind us doesn't compromise. Okay? I want to make sure that the things that the city of Prescott has been planning on for the last 25, 30, 40, 50 years isn't compromised because somebody comes out here from someplace else and says, look, we've decided we want to try this and try this and try this. What I would prefer to do is try and work with people and come up with a solution. All right? And that solution is going to be hinged on making sure that the water reservations that have already been implemented aren't compromised.
Okay. Fair point.
That's where I'm coming from.
Sure. And I'll reiterate our desire to work with the city of Prescott, Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, I mean, any of the, any of the municipalities, any of the organizations in this area to, if we can be part of a more regional type of solution, future for the water resources and the water demands, we would love to be part of that. We realize that we're from out of state. We are, kind of you call it Johnny Come Lately, but we're partnering with Tucson Electric, sister company that's in the state of Arizona. But we understand that ITC itself is coming from out of state. So we, we're not trying to act like some sort of savior on a white horse or something. That's not what we're doing. We think we can build a project that provides benefit to the transmission grid in this region, to ultimately to rate pairs in the state of Arizona as well as the whole region in general. And we can do it by partnering with the folks I just mentioned on a comprehensive water plan. So we think we can be part of that. We're starting to have initial discussions and hopefully those will really progress over the next six to nine months and kind of see where the interests are and find some products that have benefit both for those groups as well as us.
In no way do I want to appear adversarial because I'm not.
Okay.
Okay? I'm not adversarial whatsoever. The world's going to change. It has for many, many years. All right? Fact of the matter is our opportunity to embrace some of these changes comes through cooperation. All right? The one cooperation that I want to make sure of in my tenure on the council is that the water rights of the citizens of Prescott doesn't go away.
Sure.
We, we depend on it.
Good.
Councilman Good?
I just want to clarify a couple of things. One of my concerns was what your plan was to fill these reservoirs. Did you just say that you plan on filling them with this 20,000, 27,000 acre feet over a 10-year period?
No, the 10-year period is, we're looking at 2028 for in-service. So the actual timeframe for filling those reservoirs, we don't know exactly because we don't know exactly when we could start construction, when that lower reservoir might be ready to receive water versus when the pump turbines commissioning process might be done. But my guess is it's anywhere from a very minimal, or not minimal, but the shortest time period that is feasible is about two years. And we love to extend that out as much as possible. So that's why when we do actually get to starting construction, we would focus critical path on getting that lower reservoir done so that if we can attenuate that fill over four or five years, that's much better. It's lesser of an impact versus doing it over two years.
Well, two years would be a mammoth impact. When I first heard your presentations, there was a expectation that your water requirement for evaporation and leakage was about 1,000 to 1,200 acre feet a year. Now you're saying you think you can get it down to 50 to 80?
No, 50 to 80% reduction from the 925 acre feet that we're, right now, that's what our engineering firm is telling us is that's, if there's no, nothing done to the reservoirs themselves and they're just open to the atmosphere, that's the, the net atmospheric evaporative loss.
Well, 1,000 acre feet per year is certainly mitigatable. Coin a word. Through retiring a bag and things like that, but 27,000 acre feet over two years is a mammoth amount of water. And how you could possibly keep that from not damaging the Verde River is beyond my, my fantastical imagination.
Good. Well, that's why we're doing our water studies to find out. We, we've done some preliminary with the O8 model and we see a very small impact and we think it's an impact that is mitigatable, to use your word. But that's why we're doing that model and bringing it up to speed to see what that shows us. And we've hired Don so that he can, he can run this process. I'm trying to stay out of this. ITC is trying to stay out of that process as much as possible. We don't want folks thinking that ITC is having Don just make a model come out to what ITC wants. That's not what we're trying to do. We've hired Don, we are paying Don, but it's as independent as we can get till somebody do what he's doing.
My other concern is your customers. The proposal here is that this will be a benefit to the residents and citizens of Arizona. But we know that our neighbor to the west here, California, already has in legislation and it's approved, a number of extremely aggressive renewable energy requirements. They want to be at 50% renewable by 2025, 60% by 2030, and 100% by 2045. So you're a for-profit company. I'm sure you're going to be selling your energy to the highest bidder. So it seems to me that they're going to be needing this energy way more than Arizona is going to need it. Consequently, the price will be higher. So we may be creating, or you may be creating this whole project to supply California with their energy needs in off-peak periods.
Okay, so our intent here, this is a regional project. This could, and we'd love it if this project were to entirely stay within our partners and our off-takers within the state of Arizona, but that may not be possible. And it really depends on what the other opposing folks within the IOUs in, say, SRP, APS, Tucson Electric, AppCo, you know, co-ops, what they feel about your project and what level of interest they find that makes the most sense for their system and their investments. It may make sense for somebody from California to participate in this project. What it does, from my perspective, is it provides somebody else to help foot a lot of the capital cost of this project. So it drives down the cost that's hitting, ultimately hitting the Arizona rate pairs. So I see benefit to both. I see the Arizona utilities being able to look at this and say, what makes the most sense for us? And, and maybe they don't see any sense and they don't participate. And if they all say that, likely this project doesn't happen. But if they can pick the size that they want and fill in the balance from another out-of-state resource like that, that allows those utilities within the state to make the most of what they think is the right investment and downside, or kind of decrease the total cost to the state of Arizona and have some, another entity help pay for that.
I can absolutely see that. California would much rather be a part owner and be able to negotiate a reasonable acquisition price than not be an owner and just have to pay whatever the market demands from that valuable electricity in off-peak periods.
So that's, we'll all be part of commercial discussions we'll have with any of our partners or off-takers. And we'll just see where those go. Different entities have different motivations in terms of whether they like to invest in a project like this and have rate base, so to speak, or whether they prefer to kind of purchase access to it and use it that way.
Well, I'll be very interested in finding out how you're going to deal with this 27,000 acre feet over two years.
Yep, sure.
Councilman Blair?
Just real quick. You said it would be a benefit to the region and I sit here trying to understand what the benefit would be, but maybe you might be suggesting that Tucson Electric will go into competition with APS in Yapai County so that our rate, rates go down? Would that be the only benefit that I can see?
No, I don't think there's, I'm not speaking for any, any of those utilities in terms of what their intentions are. When I say that there's benefits here, depending on where the renewable mix goes, those utilities will all be making investments in renewable energy and any number of generation resources over the next 12, 30, 40, 50 years. And to get the most out of those investments and make sure they're running at peak efficiency 100% of the time, this facility will help them allow them to do that. So they get more out of their other investments and it makes sense financially for them to invest in a project like this.
How do you propose to, because I haven't heard that much about it, how do you propose to put the energy into the grid? What kind of infrastructure do you have to build to do that?
So we're proposing three 500 KV transmission lines to, to connect to the grid. So the three that we're proposing, and we're going to be having public meetings here the third week of October, the week of October 22nd, to kind of roll that out because we had some meetings back in June where we kind of really focused on the pump storage facility itself. And we've done work since then to define as best we could where the transmission corridors would be. And we're in this point now where we can present that to the public and get feedback from the public on those proposed routes.
Quite sure that'll be of interest as well.
Sure. So the meeting, just to give a heads up, right now, we're looking at Thursday, October 24th or 5th, I apologize, I don't know which is the Thursday, but here in Prescott for that meeting. We also have one on that Wednesday in Seligman and the Tuesday up in Boulder City, Nevada.
Finding that date for here. You said it's a Thursday.
It's the Thursday evening of that week.
25th, October 25th. Okay. If you want to, we kind of hijacked you here a little bit, but that's all right. When we have questions, we like to fire away. If you want to finish your presentation, then we'll see if there's any other questions or comments from the council.
Sure thing, thanks. So the three things that kind of jump at us is why this site makes sense, suitable topography. So when you're looking for a site for pump storage, you're looking for something that has that elevation change that you were looking for. And again, it was about anywhere from 1,000 to 1,500 feet for the size of facility within a relatively small distance. So this, in this case, it's about three quarters of a mile. And what that does is decrease the amount of capital cost, the amount of tunneling, the amount of underground work, which is always very risky in a project like this. So that was one thing. Availability for grid interconnections. So it's, it's a great location from how the transmission grid is laid out here in the Southwest. Three, so the three lines we're proposing, one will go east, one will go west, and one will be kind of northwest. But they're connecting in the 500 KV lines that go into population centers south and potentially west of us, depending on what the partners are. And then close proximity to grid market hub, same thing. Southwest of Las Vegas is the primary electrical trading hub in the, in the desert southwest transmission system. And this is probably about 120 miles away. So electrically, it's very close. So just an overview, a couple, some statistics here we have, again, 2,000 megawatts is what this could produce at any one time. It's located about five miles southeast of Seligman. The lower reservoir is located within the valley, so it's not visible from, say, I-40 and outside the valley. The upper reservoir is just, it would be just to the west of Pecacho Butte. And that, that would be visible from, say, I-40, maybe from Williamson Valley Road, but it's a good five miles away. The one powerhouse we have, we're proposing to be underground, excuse me, so be eight units, four fixed speed, four variable speed. And the way the, it's just a large underground tavern. And then there's three transmission lines that I talked about earlier. Daily operation schedule, 10 hours of generating, 12 to 14 hours of pumping. So again, that's part of what your 20% loss is. So 12 to 14 hours a day could be spent storing energy and the 10 hours a day could be used for getting that energy back out of the grid when it's needed. So when we say we would convert about 3,000 acres currently used for grazing, that's taking kind of the, the areas where the actual reservoirs are and the infrastructure immediately surrounding that, that would be fenced in and removed from grazing activities. We're trying to keep as much of that, the rest of the property we're purchasing continuing to be used for grazing through the existing sublease, subleases, or potentially doing some land swaps with some neighboring ranches that would kind of move into that area. And we would help support implementation of public policy goals for renewable energy. Again, that's not really what's, it's not what's driving this project, but some of these things, if they come to fruition, this is certainly a big step towards meeting those goals. And I talked about some of this in the questions, so I'll, I'll kind of speed through this, not because I'm avoiding it, but I think we've already talked about a lot of this. You can see some of the numbers that I threw out earlier. Closed-loop design is something I didn't mention, but it's a term that FERC uses. FERC is the Federal Energy Regulatory Committee. That's the federal agency that's responsible for licensing a project like this. Closed-loop means that the facility itself is, the water is being recycled back and forth between two reservoirs. And those two reservoirs are not using any existing navigable waterway. So some pump storage facilities around the country either use an existing lake as one of the reservoirs, they use a river, something where there's an aquatic habitat that's directly affected, and this does not do that. And we are committed, as I mentioned earlier, to long-term stewardship of the water and land in the ridge and be part of some partnerships. Again, that's some stuff that we'll start rolling out and making public your first quarter next year when we have a handle on kind of costs associated with it and how it fits into the overall suite of mitigation that we're going to throw out as options, I guess, to folks to give us feedback. So we are proposing at this point to fill those reservoirs with pumping groundwater. We are keeping all options on the table. That includes bringing water from, from off-site. It's a very expensive proposition, so I'm not sure how realistic it is, but that is something we're looking at, especially talking to some of our other potential partners in terms of how they use water in other parts of the state for their generation facilities. And maybe there's some synergies we can do from that. We're not committing to anything on that point, but we are looking at that, those possibilities and see how feasible and realistic they are. We're doing the hydrogeological modeling to kind of tell us what the models and the science is telling us. And again, a combination of short-term and long-term mitigation projects. There may be some that are focused on just the near term, just the next 10 years when we build this. And there may be commitments we make that maybe 20 years from now, we will do this, or 30 years from now, or just something that's an ongoing mitigation project that we will fund going forward. So we'll just kind of see how that shakes out in terms of balancing one versus the other. And then I mentioned, I think you mentioned the conservation easement, that's something that we're going to look at for the balance of the project area that we would have control over. And we have been working and talking to the state land department about that as well because there's trekkers boarded in that area. And at this point, they are open to those discussions and working with us on that. So there's a quick look at the interconnection plan that we're proposing. So you can see the two connections, east and west. So the Yavapai Station is located just to the east of Chino Valley. It's an existing station right now. There's, I think, two 500 KV lines that run north and south, just to the east of that station. So our proposal is to tie into that. And then to the west, this has future Peacock Substation. There's an existing Peacock Substation that's there that's only a 230 KV, but there's a 500 KV that runs north and south from there that connects up from Meade Substation to the Northwest, down to Perkins, which is down near Phoenix. And we propose to tie into that 500 KV with a new, kind of new Peacock Station is what we're saying. And then the third one there is going to Eldorado, and that's that transmission hub that I mentioned earlier, just southwest of Las Vegas and Lake Meade. And that gets you into kind of the market hub for transmission in the desert Southwest. Again, I kind of tucked on all these. I think this was stuff that I've already hit. Firming of renewable resources, which just means you're enabling those investments in renewable resources to work as much as possible, be as efficient as possible, 100% being worked, not being curtailed. We did commission Arizona State University to do a study on what the impact to the statewide GDP would be, both for the three counties where this project would be when you count the transmission. So some of the terms, job years and stuff, a little confusing, but we just use the terminology that ASU used, so we didn't want to change that. We just said, here's what they provided and we're making that available.
So can I ask you for a second?
Sure.
The 45,000 jobs?
Yep.
Okay, 25-year period.
Yeah.
So locally, what do, what do you see job-wise as far as that will actually be?
Yeah, I don't, I don't have a number to, to give you.
Approximate, I know we've, we've talked about this before, so I just wanted to...
I hate to even say a number because I know it'll be wrong. I just know it because I just don't, we don't, it was kind of what ASU looked at. But we do know a project like this will have significant impact to the businesses in this area just from the ancillary needs of a facility like this and just keeping it up and running. So it's, it's a positive. We would, I think we would be at this, when it gets on service, the largest taxpayer in the county, in Yavapai County.
Well, I think, I think we would be interested in knowing what that was, so something could be put together on that.
Sure, okay.
Thank you.
So community engagement, this is something that we started probably back in February and we've been meeting with folks on a regular basis over the last six, from February up until now, and we will continue to do that going forward. We want to be as open as we can about what we're proposing. Part of it is just to make sure that folks hear directly from us what we're proposing. And sometimes misinformation can be out there. That's life, but we want to meet as many people as much as we can so they understand what we're trying to accomplish and why we're doing it. And if there's any partnering possibilities, if they have any ideas on products that might work into what we're talking about with our mitigation plan, something that we haven't thought of. We've got a whole lot of ideas thrown at us and they're all up on a piece of paper that our modeling group is going to look at. So that's what we've been doing. We did public outreach, kind of formal FERC meetings back in June. We will do some more open houses for the transmission site in October. FERC will have a series of meetings in the first week of November, including a site visit and some stakeholder interagency meetings and some tribal meetings as well in the first week of November. in the first week of November. And this whole, I'll get into the schedule here, I think a few more slides kind of lays that out. There's additional opportunities over the next two to three years, where the public will have opportunities for input and, and to see what's, what FERC is looking at and how they review our license application. So in 2018, we're doing a number of studies. I'm going to try to get through this pretty quick, just to not take up too much time. But it's just a summary of everything that we're looking at in terms of what's the potential impact of our project. It's not just water, potential impact to native plant species, to wildlife in the region, view sheds. These are all kind of things that any large infrastructure project will look at and put a study together, present study proposals to folks. We did that back in June. Part of our October meetings are presenting some of the findings from those study work this year, and to propose what we're going to look at in 2019 as well. And so folks can have an opportunity to provide feedback, and whether they want us to study something more, a little bit differently. And we'll take that into account. What else did I miss? Vegetation mapping. And we do have a weather station out there that we're posting, the meteorological data we get about once a month. It's a physical person needs to go out there and download it, and we'll get it up there on the site. So that's something we're doing. And people can download that information as much as they, as they want, probably on a monthly basis. So overview of our study approach, kind of hit on a little bit already. We do have a pad, which is a pre-application document. We submitted to FERC back in March, I believe. That's available on our project website. Project website will be at the end of the presentation here. And everything, everything along this is all geared towards being part of our FERC license application, which we're targeting for the first quarter of 2020 at this point. So about 15 to 18 months from now. So here's, the next three sides are kind of zooming in onto kind of the study area. So right now, our study area is immediately surrounding the project. And you can kind of see from the map kind of where that is. Zoom in a little bit more. On the very upper top of the slide is Seligman. The green, you can kind of see those circles, those are the reservoirs. And then that green area, kind of looking, heading down to the bottom, slightly to the right, is anticipated to get to the wells that will be filling the reservoirs. But again, those exact locations aren't known yet, because we need to figure out, again, like I mentioned earlier, we're doing that geophysical work on the site to define where those upper limits of that aquifer is and where it makes sense. From a project perspective, we love to get that water from as close to the project as possible and as far away from the Verde as possible. That's a benefit for everything. So we'll see how, what the data shows.
Mayor, can I ask?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead.
So how many wells are you looking at doing?
Likely it will be three, but it will depend on kind of what the, what the aquifer looks like at those points and what, how fast they would be able to fill. And what makes sense? If we have six years to fill it, then maybe you don't need three, maybe you pump it a little, it just, there's a lot of unknowns at this point. Right now, we're looking at three as an optimal number.
All right, thank you.
And then here's a kind of the zoom into the very small kind of project site. So kind of upper right, you can see Picacho Butte. Upper reservoir is just to the west of that. And then that ridge, that kind of area in between the reservoirs, that's the ridge, and that's that 1,000-foot of elevation difference where it drops down into the valley on the other side there. And then the, all the green areas are the infrastructure surrounding it, from roads. And then off to the left there, that green corridor is likely the permanent access from Williamson Valley Road. So we've talked about this a lot. Again, I'll probably go through these quick, but I think just because we've already covered it. The objective is to understand the impacts on the Big Chino groundwater, the Verde River, and residential wells in the area. We're using the groundwater model and, and getting changes since, I guess, in '05. So the methods, geophysics, test drilling. Again, the drilling that we're doing, we have not put any new wells in. When we get, probably in another month or two, we'll have a good idea where we think a good location is for those wells. And we will probably drill one new test well to see. And we'll see what the results of that is. That's maybe, likely this fall, maybe next year. We'll have to see how that works out. Modification to the regional model, which I mentioned earlier, to bring that up to speed with stakeholder input. Status and schedule, modify the model through August. That's kind of gone through this month. Don's, I think, has got a meeting either later this week or next week, where all those stakeholders coming together in one room to kind of do a final pass, I think, and maybe come to some consensus, or maybe not to a consensus. We'll see how it works out. But that's sort of the culmination, I think, at least towards the end of that initial phase of bringing that model up to speed where it's usable.
And Mayor, can I ask you, so is that open to the public?
Not open to the public, but we are open to any stakeholder who had somebody with hydrogeological expertise and then experience that could be, somebody that does this kind of for a living, that would really be a valuable participant, that could, could understand what's going, I don't want to say understand what's going on, but be, who was really into hydrogeology and can understand that. So we don't want that to be a public meeting, only because it just, when you get so many people in a room, it's very hard to get anything accomplished, I guess. So we're, so we've been open to any stakeholder who has somebody who can participate to that level of knowledge. And, and then those meetings themselves are closed, but we will put the, the results of those conversations up on our website when it's appropriate. So we're kind of shooting for the end of this year to have that suite of mitigation options. So that first quarter next year, we can start making those proposals public and start getting feedback from folks and see what they think. Cultural resources study. Unless you folks want me to get into each one of these, I think I'm just going to skip through the, maybe the next seven or eight slides, just because they talk about just the details of how we're going about this in the slide presentation. I don't know if you want a copy of this after to post, so you can have it done.
That'd be great.
Great. So we'll do a botanical study as well. Jurisdictional determination study. So this is Waters of the US, United States Army Corps, that type of thing. So there's some, this is as much legal as it is, I think, physical. So that's one of the things we're looking at as well, surface water rights and things like that. So visual resources, what's, how's a visual view shed of the area affected by our project, not only just the facility itself, but the transmission lines as well. Habitat mapping study. So this is getting into the wildlife in the area, what the impact might be on them. There's a picture of our weather station that we have out there on site. And again, that, that is made, put up on our website on about a monthly basis. So, so 2019 study land process, studies, study plan process. Again, we'll make those presentations to folks at our October meetings. And just looking into expanding on the 2018 studies and then including the transmission corridors for next year, now that we have an understanding of, at least initially, where we're proposing, and then pending public feedback. It could change if warranted. So here's some schedule for this year. So there's our stakeholder comments kind of down near the bottom in October. We'll take that feedback, and our goal is to turn that around in one month and finalize those study plans and post them and send them out to our distribution list. Here's a high-level timeline for the entire project. Through 2000, early 2020 is when we'll be doing all this study work and preparing our license application, with the goal to submit that in first quarter 2020. At that point, FERC will basically review that and go through their own environmental process to evaluate the project, as well as any other impact it might have. And typically, I say typically, we'll see what reality holds, but 18 to 24 months is about what the time that they need to evaluate a project like this. So our hope is by the end of 2021, that's just the target we put up on a high-level schedule like this. So if that all happens, 2022 is when construction would start, with a construction timeline from anywhere from five, maybe eight years at the max. We'll see. It's very early in the process to understand construction and how long, because there's a lot of things you can do to optimize that or different approaches. So right now, we're saying 2028 as a rough in-service date for the project. So which is 10 years from now. So here's some FERC licensing, again, federally licensed project. Primary elements for them, stakeholder consultation, issue identification, and study plan development, gather information, and we develop and file the license application. Stakeholder will have, stakeholders will have the ability to comment on that license application. FERC will evaluate that and potentially issue a license or not. That's just very high level, how the process works. So here's some licensing milestones we have. Some of this is same from that previous slide. Stakeholder scoping comments in November, finalized plans. Right there, we have December. We're hoping to turn that around by November. Maybe December's more realistic. We'll issue those scoping documents in December, I guess. And then we'll do studies in 2019. And then late next year, about a year from now, we'll be issuing drafts of our license application, get comments from stakeholders before we submit that to FERC. And then we're targeting February 2020. Schedule one of two, again, some of this is same information. There's just some meetings we've already had, including the late June meetings. Schedule two of two takes us through there. Same information is on that previous one. So if there are, so when we submit, or when we make those study, study plans available, so study, stakeholder study requests should identify the studies that's talked about and the information that's needed from their perspective, explain the basis for the request, and discuss the applicable resources and stakeholders' goals and objectives for the resource, explain why each recommended study methodology is more appropriate than what maybe we are proposing as a project, and document that that methodology is an accepted practice. And then the last bullet point, explain how the studies and the information requested will further resource goals and objectives that are affected by the project. So here's just the acronyms. Sometimes you get in these presentations, you do a lot of industry speak, so to speak, so there may be some abbreviations we used. Here's a reference for you on what some of them mean. And then here's our last slide, so there's our project website. Folks can check that out at any time. And I guess that's it. So thank you for your time and for the invitation. If there's any additional questions, I'll be happy to answer them.
Yeah, thank you for that. Councilman Lamerson?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Appreciate you being here.
Sure.
Okay. I have some reservations and some concerns about all of it.
Okay.
Be very candid with you. You know, at, at the end of the day, Prescott is the only assured water provider in the AMA. Okay? We have some issues that have to do with arsenic. We have some issues that have to do with lots of different things. When you go out there and you start messing with a water table in a magnitude that you're talking about messing with a water table, and I didn't hear anywhere in your presentation where you're going to assure Prescott's water rights, you're going to assure mitigating if you mess with the arsenic levels in our aquifer. You know, anytime you have a nice cup of coffee and you're laying it down with sugar, the lower and lower you get, the sweeter the coffee gets. Well, it's the same thing with a, you know, arsenic in the, in the water table. Mitigation, that comes to mind. What does that really mean? Where are the citizens of Prescott's water rights being protected in your proposal? That comes to mind with me. Okay? Because we have an assured water right. We have, we bought using our Colorado River Water Rights, the right to Big Chino water. I have a responsibility to ensure the citizens of Prescott's rights in the Big Chino are not compromised, coming with, I don't want to sound Johnny-com-lately, it just sounds like a smart aleck, and I don't mean to sound that way.
Understood.
Okay? But somebody coming in after the, after the game, saying, we got a new idea. What about ours? Okay? That's, that's what I'm hired by the citizens here to do. What about us? You know, we have a water right there. I want to make sure that our water right's not being compromised, and if it is, you're going to fix it.
Okay. So a couple of things. I appreciate those comments. The city of Prescott is participating in the Water Group, so that's, so the opportunity for input there is already happening. And I'll reiterate our desire to partner, whether it's, at least at a minimum, have conversations and find out what we're doing, what your, what your views about that are, how you feel it may affect those water rights. So we're very much open to working on a regional basis with the communities in this area to make sure that we don't just ignore everything else going on. We understand there's a lot of water demands on that aquifer. And we feel that we can breathe, we can make this a positive, a positive benefit, where it's better to have us there than if it weren't there, when you look at both the long-term impact and in terms of looking at how we can mitigate that initial withdrawal of water as well.
So are you indicating in your public comments that all the exempt wells that may be not able to pump as much water as they did 10 years ago, you're going to fix that too?
No, we're not saying that, because we're not-
Well, I'm just asking that, because assuredly, very similar to what Councilman Good said, if you're going to impact it right up front with this kind of immediate withdrawal, that's going to have an impact. It's not going to be something that's just not going to happen.
Right. We acknowledge that there's an impact. The question is, what is the impact? And that's what the model group, what the modeling effort is for. So we want to understand what that impact is and how far that is. If we pull water from five miles from where that ranch is, or from where Paulden is, or the Verde is, that has a much bigger impact to that than maybe 25 miles away. So there's a lot of unknowns that we need to answer first, in terms of where we're going to pull the water, how far we, how much time we pull that water from, and then what we do to mitigate that, what we can do to either use recharge in areas, whether it's the Sullivan Dam or other places, whether we retire other irrigation that's happening that has a bigger, or has, or a large effect, I guess exponentially, on those resources you're talking about. So we're very much open to having those discussions and making sure that we do this in a responsible manner, and we're not doing it in a vacuum, ignoring those other demands.
I appreciate you being here. I appreciate the open dialogue. I just hope that all my neighbors in Prescott Valley, Chino Valley, Yavapai County, et cetera, are listening to what we're talking about, because it's going to impact them too. It's not just about the city. Now, I'm responsible for the city, as are my other six council members up here. I'm concerned over the city, but I'm also concerned over my neighbors, because my neighbors are also my customers, you know? So I'm just sharing a way, the, the farther we go down the pike, I want to know what the word mitigation means.
Sure, sure. And that, that is, that is, we will make that more definition around that, probably first quarter next year. And I don't want to sound like I'm dancing around that, but I don't want to give answers that I don't have. Our group is working on that now.
Thank you. And I don't want to ignore it. You know, I just, I just want to drive it home that mitigation means different things to different people.
Absolutely, right.
Okay?
Yep. And we will do more definition around that first quarter next year, when we'll start getting that out to the public and letting people know what that really means, at least to us as a project. And they can let us know what they think. And then we'll figure out. I mean, at the end of the day, we want to get to a solution that works for everybody. We'll see what reality holds, I guess.
Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you. I'm sorry, I did not get your name in the beginning.
Sorry about that. Brian Stedanka.
And Brian, I'm sorry, I know we've spoken several times. I think I've been to four or five of the meetings and presentations, and it's kind of beginning to sink in more. It is pretty technical, but I do appreciate the outreach you've done. I think you guys have really done a tremendous job of being in the communities, talking to everyone, getting ideas. So appreciate that. I, like Councilman Lamerson, agree with some of his concerns. I mean, one of my first ones from the get-go was, we're spending millions of dollars on testing out there. We're drilling wells, we're getting data. But I've been assured that by the time we, by the time you guys get started, we will have our data back on all of these tests that we're spending a lot of money on. So that's one of my concerns that, as you're out there poking and playing, and that it's not affecting our tests that we're having done. The other thing is, I, I would like more of a firm answer about jobs. I would think that you guys know how many people you're going to have to, I mean, if you've done all this, you must have some idea of how many people it's going to take to construct, how many people to run the facility once it's done.
Yeah. We have an idea, and I can give you those. I thought you were asking for how many jobs in, like, in Yavapai County this might create. And that's a much more-
Well, I guess I kind of am. Yeah.
Okay. So the estimation for actually during construction, say, construction is over seven years, it would kind of be anywhere from 400 to 800 jobs at any one time, probably peaking out at 800 jobs to build the project. And then for long-term on the, on the facility itself, this is not a coal plant, so it's not a labor-intensive facility where you might have 400 or 500 employees. It's going to be probably less than 50 employees running it full-time.
50 or 15, I'm sorry?
Five-zero.
Five-zero. Okay, great. Thank you. And then the other, I really appreciate the ideas of the mitigation that you're talking about, like the conservation. Is it really feasible to bring that water in for that first project when you're pulling down, down all that water? Can you really bring that much water to us?
Well, we'll see, we'll see what amount of water the modeling effort tells us we need.
Okay.
And then, then the next step is start having, having those conversations, say, how can we do that?
Okay.
We feel we can, but at the end of the day, I can't say that we, this is the amount of water we need, because we don't know yet from the modeling effort. So we kind of, it's kind of one step at a time, and we're not quite to that step yet.
And then final question is, on reservoirs, as far as the evaporation, I've heard of operations and technology where you can actually float things on the water-
Yes.
-that will reduce evaporation significantly, like, I don't know, balls or something? I've seen it-
Different terms, but shade balls is the terminology that I think we're comfortable using.
All right.
There has been, that has been used on some reservoirs in California, similar size. And they've reused evaporative loss by up to 80% on those reservoirs.
That's what I've heard.
We're not ready to commit to that yet. I think at the end of the day, I mean, if we were to do something like that, you could knock down the amount of water used by, over 100 years, by like 80,000 acre feet.
Absolutely.
So that would be a tremendous improvement over what's currently being used on the property. But I think at the end of the day, that needs to be one of the, evaluated against all the other mitigation projects, and see where the priorities with people lay. Do they lie in more of the long-term limiting that, or is it more concern about maybe the, the immediate impact of that withdrawal? And where do you want to take those dollars? And where do you want to focus that mitigation? You know? Because at the end of the day, we're, this is a large capital project, so we have some dollars, and there are some significant dollars for mitigation. But it's not an open checkbook. So at some point, it's just too much, and the project won't happen. So that's part of it. So that'll be certainly one of the high possibilities, but it's expensive. One of the things, those shade balls last about 20 years. So that investment needs to be made every 20 years, so-
And they're not that big, are they? They're like-
About four or six inches in diameter.
Right.
So there's millions of them. But with pump storage, they work really well, because they go up and down, as the volumes go up and down, and they can adjust and keep that, that contact low. So that's one of them where we are looking at. And we're looking at other options as well. Hard membranes kind of don't really work well for pump storage, simply because of the elevation change and things like that. But that's stuff we're looking at right now. And we're actually even doing some additional R&amp;D to work at capturing whatever mitigate, or whatever evaporation there is at those reservoirs, and returning those back to there. So even, say, if we get it down to 200 acre feet, we're trying to see if there's any research and R&amp;D that we can do to capture that 200 and get it down even further. We're not ready to commit that. And that's probably something that happens over five years. It's a little bit more time, but we're looking at it, and we're trying to figure out how to get that down as low as possible.
Thank you, Brian. And, and I think, you know, we all want to be part of, of this region and doing what we can to do the right thing for the region. So thank you.
Thank you. We do as well. Thank you.
Councilman Blair?
I think we've all heard a bunch, and I appreciate you being here. And I can assure you, sitting on this dais up here for 20 years, I've been involved with the water issue for 20 years.
Yes, sir.
You've got a long road ahead of you.
Yes, sir.